Alrighty, welcome back everyone. Sorry, Teams sends you back kind of suddenly. Hunter, it is all you.
Everyone is back. Hello. I hope you all enjoyed your discussions in your breakout rooms. And now I'm gonna let Track actually explain about policies. Right?
Um, this is Track. Do you want to have people summarize what they talked about from their breakout rooms first? And then I'll add the piece about policies?
Sure, sure. Absolutely. So I would like, this is Hunter speaking, I apologize. I didn't say that before. And I do want to get two things. I know that there was, I know that there were two groups, training and policies. And so I'd like to know, summary of what your discussions were. If you could, please raise your hand and then we'll call on you for you to make comments. Do we have volunteers from either group? Okay, it looks like Ray, please.
Sure. Yeah, this is Ray. I can start. So, training team, first, we just provided some context. And I think it's safe to say that we do think this committee should continue. We have continuing work to do. So our goal interests were figuring out how to roll out the training more widely. So Destiny just met last week with, or the beginning of this week, with the HR Training Coordinator and the Race Equity Coordinator. Sorry if I don't have those titles exactly right. But about strategies to roll the training out beyond kind of voluntary department requests. And also to hire someone to do the contract since Ty Ray has moved out of state. Also continuing to advocate for the development and delivery of the training for interpreters, so that all the interpreters we hire have trans competence. And the third thing, I know, we're supposed to have one to two. But the third thing is to begin to develop or, you know, develop and start delivering a more action-oriented 201 training that teaches people a little more now that you have awareness. What, how can you change your department, your best practices and the policies you follow? So that's us.
All right. Thank you very much, Ray. And did anyone else want to add from that group, the training group? Does anyone else want to add something to what Ray said? I know that you talked for about 30 minutes, right? Oh, I'm sorry, I know that we have about 30 minutes. So I'm not sure who all was there, but did anyone else want to add something? Okay, see none. Was there any other discussion that you wanted to share? I do want to mention what Ray was talking about with the training, that this has been ongoing. And that the goal is to complete, my goal, yes, it's the bigger picture goal, is before 2021, was, is to complete that. And I prefer that it would be before the TEC, meaning the Trans Equity Council Summit would be happening, for that summit itself. My goal is to have the training before and have that be official. I know it's been kind of an ongoing, but yes, we do actually want it to happen. That would be my goal. We haven't had, we've had time delays, et cetera. So we need, we do need your input and support as well. And whoever's involved in these subcommittees, then really, we need to have everyone be committed to meet. And we expect you to have time investment in this as well. And a commitment to continue making it happen. And there was something else I was gonna say, but let me just check my notes. At Track, am I forgetting anything that I was supposed to add from our conversation?
This is Track. I don't think so. So feel free to pass it to the policy room whenever you feel ready.
All right. So before we do move on, I just want to make sure that you all feel like you're ready. If it's time that we're gonna be having virtual meetings and particularly for training as well, we are going to have to continue training for the general community as well as educators, HR, et cetera. You know, we recognize that this will be ongoing training and we have to really invest and make sure that there's the time investment in there. And if someone can't make it still to be involved in some way, maybe an email conversation or something along those lines. So for the interpreters that can't make it, you know, then we'll communicate with Track and so then if there are any issues that come up, we will have an interpreter with me via video. But we do need to be sure that we have commitment and that people are ready to roll up your sleeves and get moving with some of this. So I'm so proud of you all, so thank you. And let's go ahead and move on to the policy group. Anyone from the policy group? Anybody?
This is Emma. I can talk about what we talked about. We had kind of a wide variety of folks who, some were new, some had been in the committee for a while. I'm gonna throw this in the chat, but we came up with four things I know we were supposed to do too. But these were the areas that we wanted to concentrate on specifically were
And Emma, if you're putting that in the chat, can you hold on one second for me to actually read the chat first?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
Okay. So the, the kind of very broad things that we came up with were, you know, alternatives to policing, accountability for the police department, housing equity work, sex work, decriminalization, and banning of the gay and trans panic defense. I'm looking back at our notes to make sure I didn't miss anything. I think, I think that was it. We kind of just had everyone throw their top two things in the chat and we ended up with four things. So I didn't want to exclude any of those. Since it was kind of evenly split across the board. And I guess speaking to some of the work that we have done, I think that we have talked about and touched on all of these pieces at some point. Some of them dropped off of our radar for a little while and have kind of come back. Others have become more pressing as the world has changed. So I don't know if anyone else has anything that they want to add?
Anyone? All right. This is Hunter speaking. And, oh, I'm sorry, Charlie, please.
Hey, forgot to turn my camera off. Hello, this is Charlie speaking. The only other thing was that I really liked when Shore said, you know, consider if the subcommittee still needs to be, or if maybe it warrants a new subcommittee or it can change, right? Like this is a time to assess some of the groups that have come up. So when I hear multiple, like, high priorities, I did throw out that maybe instead of policy and training as the only two, since it looked like that's what people volunteered to talk about first, there, we make room for another one to help address some of these other topics that seem, like, they could take a lot of time, to Hunter's point about capacity. We're making sure that we're able to commit and move the work forward.
This is Hunter. And is there a question? I do have a question. Are there, for Charlie, you were saying that that potentially we would have a third subcommittee. So what kind of thing were you thinking there?
I guess I would put that to the group, but what I have heard in the past was that there was interest in diving more specifically into police, law enforcement, reform, abolition, the response, or interactions of alternatives to policing and making sure that that feedback got to elected officials and council and all of those folks. So law enforcement, I believe, was also the first trans equity summit theme. Because it was, or what, the second one, I guess. The first one was about finding what themes community wanted to talk about. And the second one, we, we sort of picked law enforcement because there was a lot of community feedback about, like, I want this addressed. I want to, I want to be involved in that. So to me, the alternatives to police response kind of stood out as maybe a third subcommittee.
This is Track. I'm going to offer that the next thing we were going to talk about quickly was what policy we anticipate, like, happening in council in 2021, that the TEC also anticipates advising on. And hopefully, if I summarize that quickly, that combined with the report back from the breakout groups can help us determine subcommittees. So I'm gonna jump in and do that real quick, if that's okay, Hunter?
Yes, absolutely. And I also was gonna add something, but please go ahead, Track.
Okay, perfect. Then add after me, please. So, and I will also put this in the chat and I'll stall for a minute so our interpreters can read it. Once I successfully get it in the chat. But the main things we know are coming before council in 2021 that the TEC anticipates advising on. There are a lot of potential housing ordinances coming before council. Many of them are things that may not need you to go into the specific details of them. And it will be more just like you all getting council members to support them who are on the fence. But I put examples of those in there. We know that we have hired both new mental health crisis teams that go out instead of police to 911 mental health crisis calls and also new homeless encampment staff. And so there are questions about training for both of those. And there will be space to advise on a possible charter amendment about community safety and alternatives to policing and removing the MPD as a required city department. So I named that so that Hunter can kind of guide us now in these last 15 minutes in going through, like, what are the priorities you all named? What are the things we know are coming that you want to have some capacity to respond to? How do we create subcommittees and goals that hold both of those? And Hunter, I'll pass it back to you.
And Track, I'm sorry, I just missed the last one you said. I caught the first two and then the last one you said was?
Yes, a charter amendment about removing MPD as a required city department. So that kind of falls in the alternatives to policing category.
Okay. I think we're good. All right. So with these in mind, let me just back up for a second. And what was I gonna said? Oh, yes, we're talking about the police department. And there's huge issue with reform and removing that, that it's huge impact here. And if we're talking about having the policy and training subcommittees, then the training one would be big as well. And policy would have several, but we're wondering then, as Track had recommended about having a pool. Now that we know what the council will be addressing, this is another consideration. So, for example, the Subcommittee for Policy, let me just read again what this says. Focusing on MPD, that would be huge. And then that could be moved to a group who would be focused on training new mental health crisis team plus staff outreach. And what their plan is when, for that group. As well as, what was this other one that we're talking about, housing? That is also a huge amount of discussion. And there's also overlap with these. So it would help to clarify what strategies we would like to focus on. You know, we don't want to get overwhelmed because this is, these are some large areas. And so from this point forward, just thinking, you know, we're starting now with these discussions and finding more information. And for very new members who have joined as well as with Track, you know, it's, we, I'm sorry, for very new members, it, there is a learning curve, we understand that. And so we are, we are gonna be sure to fill you in on what's happened in the past as well as prepare ourselves for moving forward. And so please feel free to reach out to either of the co-chairs or Track. And maybe Shore is a previous co-chair. And we're happy to, to fill you in and explain what will, what will be helpful. And with you all, you know, we can see some different strategies and processes moving forward. We just don't want to get caught ourselves in the weeds and then not move forward at all. Track, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
This is Track. I don't think so. I guess the question I have for you all, and I feel, I feel very open in any direction, but while the policy group named a number of things, some of, I think it depends on whether you all are just planning on, like, naming your support to council of some of the things that are going on or whether you're trying to propose and get them to pick up, like, additional work. Particularly for, like, the housing area where there are things we know are happening. Because I think for me to understand how to best support you in terms of, does that break into multiple subcommittees? Part of the question for me is, are you trying to draft policy? Or just, like, give some edits on and support policy?
This is Emma. I would say it's a combination of both. So supporting the things that are, that you listed here, some of which do overlap. And then also potentially pushing for policy change based on some of the things that are not listed there.
And Hunter had said you read, you read my mind, Emma.
Awesome. And then this is Track. Oh, sorry, go.
We were gonna switch interpreters.
Okay, go ahead and switch and then I will go.
Okay, we're good to go.
Okay. I think the other question I have for you all then, particularly for returning members, is if we keep these two subcommittees as just the two, they will probably end up being about the size of the groups you met in today. If we split into three, it'll probably be closer to the size of times in the past when we've had much smaller subcommittees. And I'm curious which feels more useful for you all. Because that seems like the other way to determine how to split this work.
This is Emma again. Sorry that I'm talking a lot. But for me personally, it feels really good to have a larger subcommittee where there's a lot of people that can divide up work as opposed to just having like one or two core members. It's also just really like invigorating and awesome to be working on something in more of a collective atmosphere than just having one or two people. Especially knowing that people's schedules are tight and that, you know, not everyone can always make it.
And this is Hunter. Emma, yes, I agree with you. I kind of like having the two committees with the, the number of people that we have in both. And the NPD, that issue is so, is so big, it's nice to have more people involved in that subcommittee since it's such a large impact on our community. And I don't know if there is just some way to, you know, to tackle that issue, you know, as best we can. In my previous experience, you know, it seems kind of like a cyclical kind of issue. It seems like, you know, we, there's a lot of discussion and then some first steps. And, you know, we, you know, we expect the council to support us, but we don't want to accept, you know, good enough support. We would like to have full support, full investment from the council in order to really take this off the ground and get it running, rather than, you know, just a partial support. So that is something that is on my mind and I think is very important. So having these discussions in these subcommittees where we can come up with recommendations from our, from the TEC, based off what has happened and what we expect to happen. My question, I guess, would be, you know, what can the co-chairs, what can we do to, you know, facilitate and help these two subcommittees, the training and the policy? What can we do to just make, make things easier for, just to make things just more achievable? To make sure that we have transparency in everything that we do? And, you know, we're looking for serious and honest feedback because we, as co-chairs, really need to know what, what we can do to support you in these issues. So any feedback right now that anyone would like to share would be very welcome.
Anything? Anyone?
This is Billy. I would just say that I agree that having, like, larger subcommittees, at least as a newer member, I think would be helpful. Kind of get some guidance and see how they've been run previously. That would, that would be my comment.
Okay, great. Okay. Anyone else? So it sounds like we're coming to a consensus to having these two subcommittees agreeing that it's beneficial to have more people in it for more, you know, lively discussion and, and being able to delegate the work. So for the Policy and Training Committee, I'm wondering, I'm wondering if these two committees can be in alignment with just, with our, with our work and what we can do to help that as co-chairs. And please, you know, both of us are, are open to your feedback about how we can facilitate to make these two subcommittees kind of work independently but in tandem. And, and very excited to, to see what you think. And and Track, if it's okay with you, maybe newer members can kind of reference, like, past work that we've done. Is that posted publicly for them to access or is that something that we can give to them?
This is Track. Most of it should be public. I'm confused with how we're updating our website, our Legislative Information Management System right now. But most of it should be public.
Okay, great.
And I think the only other question I would add for everyone to your question is, are there any, like, other, are there any things that you want to see the co-chairs and I putting on our 2021 agendas? Whether it's additional presenters you want us to bring in or other things you want to make sure the co-chairs and I are creating space for in large TEC meetings?
I'm down with Emma. This is Shore. Emma's suggestion to revisit in a future meeting.
And this is Hunter. I'm sorry, could you repeat that one more time? I had a little frozen screen here. So Shore, you agree with Emma about discussing this in a future meeting?
Yeah, coming back to this.
This is Hunter. Sounds good. Thumbs up. Fantastic. Great. This is good. I'm liking this discussion. This is champ. I like this. So if we have any more questions, I know we're getting close to wrapping up here. But just some last comments here. So Shore, I, you're cooking dinner for us. Am I correct in that?
I wish that was the case. That would be great. That was actually one of my goals before COVID, was to bring, like, a meal to a TEC meeting because I kept bringing snacks. We all know we need more than a snack at this time of day. But then, now there's a pandemic, so see y'all in five years.
Okay, great. Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you, everybody, for coming tonight and for willing, being willing to come to our meeting tonight. And I'm looking forward to the next time we're able to gather. And whatever subcommittee you would like to join, the policy or the training, I'm looking forward to that as well. And again, just please, if you need anything from us as co-chairs, please feel free to reach out, email, text, whatever. We are here for you. We are committed to seeing this committee be successful. And to also make sure that we're all taking care of each other physically, mentally, emotionally, all of that. So we are here for you. And if there's anything else, Track or Shore, any last comments to add before we wrap up? Okay. Well, everybody have a fantastic, a beautiful night. And with that, we'll
And with that, we'll close. Goodbye, everyone.
Bye, everyone.
Have a good night, everyone. Bye.
Oh, Track, can you stay on for just a moment?
Yep, totally.
I just had a quick question, Track, so just to clarify. So as co-chairs, are we able to kind of be in the subcommittees or are we kind of?